Time is now three thirty. All order. This meeting of the Norwood Planning Commission, January third, two twenty-four. Mrs. Towne, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Present.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes, here, present.
Mrs. Sickinter, present. Mr. Hockney?
Present.
Mr. Suer?
Present.
Item B, approval of the agenda. Any amendments to the agenda? Offer one at item F three, receiving file letters from Stephanie Carruthers, Emily Gronell, Jessica Quelhorst, Gary Shanklin, and Michael Cora. Do I have a second to amend the agenda?
I'll make a second to amend the agenda.
Mrs. Towne, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Suer?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, nomination and election of chair. Do I have any nominations for chair? Nominate Noah Powers for chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Towne, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Have a statement.
Did you say your name? Yes, yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Suer?
Yes.
Moving on to item B. Do I have a nomination for vice chair?
And nominate Lisa Bernhard Suer.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Towne, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Suer?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate all your votes and congratulations, Mr. Suer. Moving on to item E, approval of minutes of the November first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Towne, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Suer?
Yes.
Moving on to item F, new business. Number one, Ventura Village Group LLC, owner four four zero one, four four zero five, Allison Street, Norwood, Ohio, four five two and two, Inc., all your books, six five one, page zero zero five zero, parcel zero two seven two. Current combination of lots, book six five one, page zero zero five, parcel zero one five zero, being zero one seven three. It's requesting to split the new lot into four separate lots facing Portland Avenue. If approved, suggested addresses would be one nine three eight, one nine four zero, one nine four two, and one nine four four, all Portland Avenue. Information is included in your packet, including certified surveys of the proposed lot splits. Any discussion?
Do we have a representative of the Ventura group, maybe, take some questions on this?
I am Pete Ventura Senior. Here to represent us.
Okay.
There are juniors on the way.
So I'll shoot some questions. Tom, I have a question about lot four. Why it's, why is it bigger than lot one, two, and three?
So can I approach on a sworn hand or?
It's not public hearing.
Okay.
Just, just need to state your name.
We swear out your name.
He heard Ventura.
You spelled Ventura.
V E N T U R A. Lot four, the corner lot, looks like it's much larger than lot one, two, and three.
Yeah. I think that's just so it doesn't sit, feel like it's sitting on the street more. Kind of get it. A good setback from both sides.
Still public side, correct?
Yes.
On, 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 on Portland, on Courtland.
Correct.
My other question would be, where, where will the AC unit, the condenser, where will that be placed on this lot? We've had questions about AC units in a corner lot like that. Where will it be?
On the backside. I'm not sure if that'll be on the ground or mounted off the back. The plan is to put it in the back. Or we'll have to have room on the, either the other sides. Way, you know, to get the driveway in and. So, you know, it'll have to be in the back. When you said the, the back, if we're looking at the. So, considering the front facing Portland? Those four fronts facing, so yeah. Okay. Be, uh, opposite back. Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
So the driveway on the corner lot will be between lot three and lot four?
Correct. All the driveways will be on the left-hand side, it's look to front. That was kind of important to us here, too, that we really wanted to get the garage just at the back of the house, not, I don't think there's any code against that in Norwood, but most of the houses you see in Norwood don't have the garage facing the street. We're trying to maintain the look within the neighborhood at the same time.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll ask one more, just the timeframe of if this is approved. What's your timeframe on, on coming back with some plans and designs?
We've already preliminarily looked at some interior designs, so we, we kind of start to move forward on that. And I would say, when, I don't know, when do you think we could really break it down? Like in, um. Within three months, three to four months, I would think.
Those are all single?
For independent permitting in and.
Same. They're all single family. That's approximate square foot.
I think it's eight hundred and seventy per, per level, is it here? That's the lot size. Yeah. Looks like these are about twenty-five by thirty-four, so they're, they're proxying eight hundred and seventy square feet per floor.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Any further questions?
I'm sorry, one follow-up question. You talked about the driveways coming out to the street. Will there be street parking in front of each one of these, a street parking spot in front of each of them? It won't eliminate parking all the way down in front of these homes, correct?
Yeah, because you still have twenty-five feet between the driveways, so, uh, yeah, at least one car in there.
All right.
Yep. The next part across the street from that, that house faces Allison as well, so it's not, there's five houses over there that are competing for parking as well, or you want a house on that corner, which is good.
Any further questions? Gentlemen, anything else you think is important for us to consider?
Not really. We're excited to hopefully get, get this thing going. I think you guys remember what used to be there and, uh, you know, try to, uh, create more single-family homes in that area and also take into mind what's going to be going in across the street at the same time and try to make it look nice and bland at the same time as we build it out. All right? Thank you.
Any discussion?
May I make a motion?
You may.
I would make a motion, remove the planning commission, approve the lots split as requested, and assign the suggested addresses. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Towne, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Suer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item F two, discussion regarding food trucks. Uh, this is an item we had on our agenda a while back. Mr. Skelly, can you refresh yourself a bit?
Um, yeah, we did have, have some initial discussions for it. So staff, um, I believe a couple of the counselors have been, I guess, discussing this to some degree over the last, I guess, couple of years. We've bounced around a couple of different policy provisions for regulating these activities, whether through zoning or through licensing. I think at this point, and again, maybe it's coming from, um, or council, I'm not too sure, if there is a desire now to put something forward, at least for zoning. So, um, I think at this point, staff, whether it's, you know, myself in the community development, building department, or public works, just trying to figure out what's the best option. I think throughout the last couple of years, we had discussions with the police, with the fire department, as to various concerns that we have for these things. Right now, um, of course, Mark Reeves not here, but if I can capture his concern, it's that we have sometimes, I'll use the example of a, a gas station, where that activity is being conducted from a particular lot. We have another activity, um, which may or may not be appropriate, using up parking spaces and conducting something which has potential, both nuisance and a fire hazard on to itself, not to mention the more general concern that you have, um, this otherwise mobile activity being conducted from a stationary lot location, which is contrary to how state law provides for the regulation of these uses. So, um, without getting in too much into the weeds of this, um, you know, staff just wanted to get direction as to is it, uh, percolating enough to a concern that, I guess, the planning commission wants to be involved and provide direction to staff on this.
Mr. Skelly?
You, you kind of alluded to, if it didn't say direct, that you know what that regulation is from the state in terms of whether food trucks might be stationary at the location?
Correct, so, um, no more than forty days.
And then they would be required under the state law to move?
To move.
Okay, thank you.
At least, the mayor could question.
Uh, my, my biggest concern with food trucks is taking business away from brick-and-mortar restaurants in the city. And it's not, not anything against entrepreneurs and people that are trying to start a restaurant. It has nothing to do with the investment that people make in the community and to, to run a restaurant and then having a food truck pull up in front of them and taking away their business. So that, that's always been my biggest concern with food trucks. So I still feel like the city should regulate the food truck business in some way, shape, form, what's, what's the best. And, and I know we have representatives from the fire department here, they've had some concerns with different issues with food trucks. I don't think we have anybody from the health department here, but, um, the way they're, it seems, it seems like their, their regulation, their license, licensing covers Hamilton County, so they can go anywhere in Hamilton County, including Norwood, they don't have to meet any requirements. And then some of the permanency of them is a challenge, I think, at times, too. So, but those are my concerns about it. If you're looking for direction from me as a member of the planning commission, I think that the city should be looking at what, what is a logical, you know, regulation of them without hindering the small business entrepreneurial spirit of it.
Yeah, I think that's part of, so I believe there might have been, um, during the COVID period where, um, the public health department was, you know, permanently sensitive to the use of these businesses, but at this point, the way I read, um, the existing requirements, if that was being fully enforced, it wouldn't be a non-issue because they would be required to move every forty days, um, from a location which would be on the street, not on private property. So to me, we could definitely put more detail of ordering in our zoning ordinance and stuff. I, I think there's a bigger issue, as you mentioned, that necessarily is not the best fit for trying to promote our own local economy, restaurants, cafes, et cetera, and we have these competing businesses. So, um, like I said, it just matters how much does the city want to get into regulating these things, including up to licensing, so.
Vic? I understand what Vic was saying, but I guess my, my biggest concern is if we're representing that the fact by letting them go, that Norwood has approved the fact that they can serve safe food. And I've asked you this before, hey, do they have a health department approval? I mean, whether or not they're brick-and-mortar a, a, a van, they're still serving food to individuals, and I think the assumption could be that Norwood is protecting that by giving them a certification that it passes the health department.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I can't answer that as to what is the public health department's current policy.
I don't know why they would not have to do that. And I think the second thing is, is they have a permanent electric hookup, which I know some are going in that direction. You know, are they being permitted by IBI here in the city? And do they have that shown so that everybody knows that they've been certified? I, I think there's, I, I don't know all the laws, but there are some laws out there for temporary facilities that I don't think they have to uphold.
Correct, I think.
And I'm all for business, any kind of business, so, um, I just think everybody's got to follow rules.
And I think that was the flashpoint that got the ire of the building department saying, hold on a second, now you're providing for utilities, making it a more permanent use on this lot.
Is that, is that location the only problem location that you're aware of?
Um, I've, at least me personally, I've seen a few gas stations where they had like a food truck there. Sometimes they move around a bit, um, but it, it's just, to me, if you want to start from principled concern, as the member was discussing, is having these things on like a separate lot, on private property, conducting a business on a more, I would say, semi-permanent basis. So that, that's the first concern, where it's not, it's a food truck by its very definition and term, it should be mobile, it should be in transport, it should be in and out, you know, even at a particular location. So we have a food truck usually visiting City Hall in front for lunch periods, and then they come back next week on Friday or whatever, but it shouldn't be, um, sitting out for several days and definitely, well, beyond forty.
As, as you stated, the state law does require them to be mobile.
Yeah.
So do you believe that the gas station is leasing to those two food trucks and allowing them, do they own that property?
I, I don't know what that, that relationship is, I just know that the, the food trucks are standing.
My, my biggest concern with the food trucks is that they do not have to meet the same requirements that our brick-and-mortar restaurants do. If there's peeling paint all over our brick-and-mortar restaurants, they can be written up by the building department for failing to meet property maintenance standards. If you have peeling paint on a food truck, it doesn't, doesn't have to meet that same standard.
It's hard. That's a cool food truck.
So, you know, I don't think we should be giving an unfair advantage to businesses that are highly mobile, and all they need to do to leave Norwood is turn the deed and drive away. You know, I, I think that they are required to be mobile by the state, they hope to be mobile, and I think that the best place for them is, is on the street with the vehicles.
I also know that the health department, um, expects the brick-and-mortars, so they are holding them to, if the health department isn't actively inspecting food trucks, that's an unlawful planning.
That, that's correct. I mean, there's also noise issues typically associated with generators outdoors, creating additional smoke and noise.
Mrs. Towne?
So one of the things that brought it up also for the building department is an ordinance that says you're not to have outdoor sales unless it, there are specific things that you may have, like flowers in the summer, pumpkins in the fall, Christmas tree, but it says no outdoor sales. So that's also another conflict for the building department trying to, that's one of the reasons they were asking about. What are we supposed to do?
Well, um, I would like to ask Mr. Skelly to prepare some zoning regulations based on these comments, that we could discuss that during the planning commission meeting.
Sounds like we already have. Sounds like we already have zoning regulations that are, that either need to be fully enforced or not fully enforced. Looking at new regulations is, if you're not going to enforce the ones that are on the books right now, if the state says forty days and you have to go.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
I just don't.
Notifying them.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if Mark Reeves wanted something beyond what we have right now. So if he mentioned or.
I believe the forty days would have to be enforceable by the health district.
Yeah.
And this would, this would allow the building department to make an enforcement.
Or no outsides. I mean, are no outside sales is something that we had businesses through COVID that did not set up outdoor seating areas and, and do that because they, they weren't allowed to do that. That was in our codes, they're, they're not allowed to do outside sales. But then we have food trucks that are doing outside sales everywhere, so we've got a double standard. For the people who've made the big investment and, and they're brick-and-mortar, they couldn't do that during COVID when they were asking to do those things, so.
So.
There were some exceptions, but, but realistically.
So would the out, outdoor sales take care of all the food trucks, or is that just the ones that aren't moving? Because food trucks serve a purpose.
I, I have read the outdoor sales prohibition to be more in, in the terms of, uh, not necessarily from a vehicle, uh, but setting up, you know, in outdoor flea market sort of thing, or selling shirts or sport apparel to make it outdoors.
That's your interpretation?
That is.
So it needs to be defined, clarified.
I think, I think that clarification will put the building department in a better position to make that.
Then I would agree with what you were, the path you're going.
Mr. Skelly, do you provide something in advance for the commission members to look at before our February meeting? We'll add this to old business at the next meeting. Any additional discussion? Seeing now, we will move on to item F three. Do I have a motion to receive and file the letters?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the communication letters.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Towne, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Suer?
Yes.
Moving on to item G one, old business review proposed ordinance language amending protocol living, planning, and zoning code relating to short-term residential lodging businesses. We also received comments from Chief Building Official Dan Bly. And from Mrs. Towne. Mr. Bly's comments are black, Mrs. Towne's comments are purple. Discussion on the proposed ordinance. Offer one item for discussion. Section four, men's codified ordinance one one five one point four two, table two, list of permitted conditional use and accessory use for primarily residential and non-residential uses. By removing, or clarifying, rather, short-term animals would not be eligible in the R one, R two, R three, and R M X district, but would be, uh, permitted use in the O, CBD, uh, neighborhood business district, general business district, and then allowable under the P U D process in, in one and in two districts. As I've thought about this, I have looked at some of the codes offered by other jurisdictions and noted that some of those allow for owner-occupied, uh, of uses, so that if a owner-occupant wants to leave a room or the second part of the multifamily, um, that would be allowable. I would like to kind of hear thoughts from the other commission members on that sort of arrangement. When I, when I look at that, I don't see that as entirely different than when the Board of Zoning Appeals would allow another home-based business, whether that be like, I know recently we had a, a hair salon, so it's a secondary use to the primary residential, um, which I think is, is kind of different. My initial concerns were allowing them in the residential components, which is that it's a pure of a business. If it's renting out the entire property, it's not an owner-occupied unit, it's an owner-occupied unit, renting out a portion of the premises, then it is, it's not primarily business at that point.
I agree with you. I absolutely agree with you. I had several, um, of our residents reach out to me, and they're really upset because they have purchased these homes many years ago and have been doing, running a clean business, doing everything right, and they didn't even know there was something on the books that said you needed to register for an Airbnb and certain things needed to be done. Two of them specifically are beautiful, they're absolutely beautiful. They've never had a police call, never had a fire call, never had parties. She does live upstairs, she doesn't, she won't put up with the nonsense. So I, I think we may be speaking about the same situations.
I think Mike, Mike brought this to our attention in the very beginning, saying, do we want to take the license approach or do we want to take the zoning approach? After reading Dan Bly, there's no doubt, I think Dan's saying, why don't, why don't you take the license approach? Take it one by one instead of making a blanket statement, because then I read all the emails and where I thought there was only three active, it sounds like there's a lot more active. That's what was documented, that's why.
There's twenty-two.
Maybe we ought to rethink versus moving this on. Maybe we rethink it and we go to the license approach that says we can issue a license and we can revoke, revoke the license. Because, and again, I'm glad fire and police are here, I'm not trying to give them more work, but at the end of the day, that's how is zoning enforced anyway? You know, it's a, uh, it just seems like if, I understand if you have some people that have invested and it is a benefit to the community if they're truly used that way.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, I'm sorry.
You're, you're, I mean, we're the planning commission, we make decisions and we've, we've decided to go down a certain path, and now that people have sent letters to us and, and that we've had comments come back to us, we're supposed to change directions and, and make it a licensing instead of, that sounds like too much common sense. That's, I, I, being facetious, of course, I totally agree with you. If we're, if that's the path, if we're going down one path as a planning commission and then it's recognized, well, wait a minute, we need to look at this a little bit more closely as we have, and we need to move to a licenser, and I think Tom would probably agree with me, too, it makes perfect sense to me here as we discuss this. And, you know, the letters that we're receiving and the people that we're talking to are saying, why, why are we, why would we do it this way? So I'm, I totally agree with you.
Well, I'm actually one of the people that kind of pushed to say, keep them the hell out of our zones, because that's where my house is, and I don't want to live next to a party house. I think I said pretty much all those words. The reality of it is, everybody who seems like. The reality of it is, everybody who seems like they live next to one of these say it's actually, in fact, better because the people are taking better care of their houses, because they're an asset, and, you know, something I hadn't thought about. So I'm starting to feel like maybe I moved a little hastily. I don't, I don't own any, I don't have any friends that own them. I stay in them, but I don't, so at the end of the day, I'm just, I mean, I do believe in Norwood is a residential, except in the other zones, for R1, R2, R3 are residential zones, and you like the community aspect. So, I mean, is this really detrimental, that? I, I don't know, they've been around a long time, I guess we could find some articles that say that, you know, it's destroyed the community effect, I haven't seen this. I think we've all Googled short-term rentals and tried to figure out what, what they're doing. So anyway, I'll quit talking. I, again, after reading Dan Bly, who I really pushed to make sure he read that, the draft ordinance, because he is the first line of enforcement, and he brings up a lot of questions about, it's gray. And I know Dan long enough to know that he's a guy who doesn't like, if he can stay away from it, he likes to be able to say to somebody, just I know as the building department does, this is the rules, we're going to follow the rules. Okay, I'll stop.
So I had someone reach out to me by the name of Christopher Hankel, and he is in charge of Cincinnati Short-Term Rental Association. And a lot of what I believe prior to this was that they were problematic. What the city of Cincinnati has done is, they have their own association, and they want to have regulation, they want to be regulated, they want to have the inspections, they want to have it licensed, because it keeps everybody safe. And the association for the city of Cincinnati said they'd be happy to come and chat with us at any time and go over some of the ways that they got over the problems they had. He also stated that any property that is a problem, they shut them down, they close it down, and it's no longer an issue. But with proper regulation, you can avoid the problems.
My concern with that would be, when you say proper regulation, that we put the right amount of teeth in whatever we do so that we can shut them down and not shut them down after three months and, and all sorts of more problems happen throughout that summer, and everybody in the neighborhood is up at arms because the city couldn't do it as efficiently and as quickly as we should. That's, that's my big concern. And if we're painting this picture, I hear this, of, well, it's all hunky-dory, and we don't have problems, but there are problems. And I've seen neighborhoods that have had problems with this, and every weekend it's somebody else, and it's huge, and it's, and we need to make sure that if the city does go with the licensure way, that we, we absolutely have a way to shut them down quickly. And there's civil rights involved, and I'm sure the law director and deputy law director and all our legal team would have to look at that closely on how to, how to put real teeth in it and make it hurt them, because that's the only way that we'll be able to do it right.
So Airbnb actually has some legislation in place, and the city of Cincinnati stated that some of the things they do is the neighbors are aware of, you know, the rentals, the Airbnbs that are in their community. And if there is a party, they not only contact the owner of the place immediately, but Airbnb has a website, you go in there and they take care of it, they move forward and, you know, close them down.
That's one, one operation. They have rules and regulations, there's no teeth, there's, they have the ability to say, you can't use our website, you can't, but they don't have any, there's no real teeth in it.
Yeah.
Needs to be something, the city has the ability to put something in there that makes it really good.
I would like to take a look at what Cincinnati did do as far as their enforcement, since your sanitary regulations shut some downs. I'd love to see what they got on the books, and if it's something we could mimic very easily.
It would be very easy to do, I actually have those. I have their legislation, and if we could fine-tune some of that.
If you would provide that to me and Mr. Skelly, we'll take a look at that. As a licensing scheme, it wouldn't require any approval by the planning commission, but we can start taking a look at that and then provide an update on where that is since this was filed with the planning commission issue at our next meeting.
Do you have interest in speaking with representative?
Absolutely.
When would you like to have that, in our next meeting?
Oh, directly to the planning commission?
If necessary.
If we're not going to take any action, I don't think that would be necessary, but I would like to have the opportunity to speak with him and Mr. Skelly as well.
I'll make that happen.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Move on to.
Go ahead. Is this, go ahead.
Leave the gentleman in the back.
I just had a question in regard to.
Please, please come up to the mic.
Sorry, my name is Antonio Poole. Well, yeah, I wanted to just discuss, I had a question regarding the Airbnb incident because, oh, Airbnb system, I just want to bid up a post, sorry, can you hear me? I just wanted to know, how is Airbnb kind of affecting the community? Because we feel like guys that own, that it brings value add to the neighborhood. I think it would be better having Airbnb than just having like group homes sometimes in the area, and I think that could lower the rate, or be more problematic, because we don't want to have parties inside these Airbnbs, just you put a lot of money, you know, we're doing some right now, and outside of Norwood, this way, we're talking about 150,000 renovations in these houses, so we're not looking for tenants to destroy the homes. That, that's just a question, you know, like, would you prefer to see guys that own Airbnb put like group homes? Because everybody, we are in it to make some money from these investments that we bring into the community. Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Mr. Skelly?
This is just, no idea you're going to look at some things with Mike, but we keep deferring any kind of tax rate.
That, I believe, that would be something that could go hand-in-hand with any licensing.
Okay.
So I have a question for Mr. Poole. Would, in other, in the city of Cincinnati, is there a licensing fee for you to register yours?
Yes, it's just like rentals, like you still register them. So then the same thing with like the neighbors, we should speak to our neighbors to let them know what's going on in the community, like, hey, this house either don't need a rental property or Airbnb. We, it's just communication. Same thing with people that have booked, that particularly Airbnb, it's like, hey, I did put a lot of money into this investment, so we wanted to take care of it. It's just like anything, like when people go to a hotel, you're not about to destroy their property, at least you're hoping not, just don't destroy the property. It's the same thing with guys that own rental properties to Airbnb, it's not for a party, it's just something unique for each Airbnb, it's going to great people. I think we should, people need to focus more on the slumlordage that's out here, the people that's destroying the community and people that, rent right now is expensive, like, so I think that's more problematic than Airbnb, people are willing to give this money for vacation homes. But what I'm seeing is, if we do renovations, do I have a construction company, and these guys out here are just not taking care of their homes, the mess, the volume of the neighborhood is, the slumlordage.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to item H, open discussion, and any other items the commission members would like to raise. Hearing none, with no absent members, so I want to take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Towne, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Dickinter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
We're now adjourned at 4:00. Thank you.
Thank you.